It's good to have Sheriff Jones join us this morning. Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the April 6, 2017, meeting of the Shawnee County Board of Commissioners. My name is Bob Archer. I currently serve as Chair of the Commission and represent District 3 alongside Commissioner Shelley Buehler, who represents District 1, and Commissioner Kevin Cook, who represents District 2. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First item, please.
Item 3, Consent Agenda.
And may I ask, before we discuss the consent agenda, I've been asked to remove Item B3 from the agenda. If there's no concern with that, we will go ahead and do that.
B3?
Yes, B3, under Corrections.
No objection.
Okay, no objection?
No objection.
All right, I'm sorry. First item again.
Consent Agenda, Item 3.
Are there comments or questions about the consent agenda?
I have none. I move for approval.
Sorry, second.
Motion made to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed say no. Motion carries 3 to 0. Next item, please.
Item 4, View Business, A County Clerk, Number 1. Consider all voucher payments.
Mr. Chairman, this morning we have vouchers that total $975,367.48. The highlights out of that voucher report, at the top of the list is Grace Med of $288,000, and that's going, we had a very nice presentation yesterday at the Huntune-Dillens, now going to be, soon to be Operation Wellspring, or the Grace Med facility. We had holding accounts with the state of Kansas, $172,319.21. Health insurance premiums of $104,407.59. KBS construction, and that was the courtroom renovation, of $82,410.1. Parks and Recreation, as we gear up for the spring, it's $94,634.38. The health department had $35,038.48, and that was mainly medical insurance liability. And then finally payroll tax with the state of Kansas of $57,058.22. I do not have any questions regarding the vouchers reports, and I would move for their approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve the vouchers by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries 3 to 0. Next item, please.
Item A2, Consider Correction Orders.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve the correction orders by Commissioner Buehler, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye, opposed no. That motion carries 3 to 0. Next item, please.
Item B, Corrections, Number 1. Consider Authorization and Execution of Contracts, C-122-2017, between the Department of Corrections, Sheriff's Office, the Topeka Police Department, and Valeo for funding of a full-time employee in the Crisis Response Program at an annual cost of $60,000, with funding of $10,000 each from the Department of Corrections and the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections, and I know Sheriff Jones is here as well. This is just an annual renewal of a contract that we've had ongoing, and that with some changes with the department heads and Chief of Police and things like that, we wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate signatures on the contract. But this is the contract that is split up between Valeo Behavioral Healthcare, the City of Topeka Police Department, and then Shawnee County, which Shawnee County splits it up between the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office and the Department of Corrections. This is for the Crisis Responder Program. This is a tremendous and vital program that we have going on to meet our needs of diverting those away from jail with those who are dealing in crisis with mental health. But the main purpose is to improve the safety and security of our staff, the officers who are dealing with crisis, and to lend better services to those who are in crisis. This has been a valuable program. It has diverted hundreds of people away from the jail into better services and things like that. We did, Sheriff Jones and I did meet with Betty regarding finance, and the Sheriff's Office related to Betty, that they have the money in their operational budget. We also, on the side of the Department of Corrections, pay this out of the inmate wellness account, because this is a program that goes strictly to the benefit of the inmates, because also, not only is it out there diverting people away, but once they come in to the jail, this person here is a liaison between Shawnee County and Valeo to come in and help screen and help prepare discharge planning for those who are in jail with mental illness. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions, and if there's any comments Sheriff Jones wanted to make, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This was an initiative that started last year, from what I recall.
Yes, yes.
And you're confident it's been extremely successful.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah. I get the statistics, I see it. There's many more. Trust me, we still get, we still are ranging around 20% of those who are in jail with serious and persistent mentally ill. But I can tell you that over the last year, we're probably, they're having hundreds of contacts in the community, less than 1% are coming to jail that they're having contacts with. Unfortunately, there are those that do, they do have contact that come to jail, but, you know, the many contacts that law enforcement have ranges in the thousands, you know, even 1%. But we do, they are diverting a lot of people away from jail and getting them into much service, the needed services, and I fully support this, or I wouldn't be here.
Sheriff, did you have a comment?
Yes, Herman Jones, Sheriff Shawnee County there. I concur with Director Cole on this project here, this program right here, in that it really does save, in the long run, it does save money, but it also saves lives. And that's, that's what's very crucial, because we now have an avenue of how we deal with individuals in the, in the field, so that we don't have a solution of putting them in jail and then incur the, the cost of that right there. But it's such a positive program that it's going to expand. We're needing more personnel. I know Valeo is dedicating more people and more personnel, as well as the Topeka Police Department. Obviously, they have more numbers there, but it does blend over. But it is a savings, it is of lives, money, and everything else for this entire county. So I concur with that and appreciate that.
Other questions or comments?
No, I would just concur with the statements made by Director Cole and the sheriff, that, you know, anytime we can have our services direct people to where they, addressing their needs, and Department of Corrections is not always the place where those needs are met. And so it costs the taxpayers much more to incarcerate versus getting people the mental health needs they have. So I think that this is a worthy cause, and I would move for its approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve the contract by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed say no. Motion carries 3 to 0. Next item, please.
Item B2, Consider Approval of Request to Apply for Competition Title II Formula Grant from the Kansas Department of Corrections and the Kansas Advisory Group that is being offered to districts that focus on data-driven, outcome-based approaches to system reforms that focus on ATD and/or DMC initiatives.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Cole, again, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. This is a request much similar to what Shawnee County ISP had regarding our ability to go out and seek to be competitive into a request for a grant. This grant here is to allow us, and I do have Angela McCarty, who is the Shawnee County JDAI Coordinator, here with me to answer any specific questions. But this is a grant here that will allow JDAI and all of us to be able to have this Hayward Burns Institute, to be able to come in and help us analyze how we can better meet the needs of our community when it comes to diverting juveniles away from Corrections, and how we deal with conditions of confinement. This is to help us to look at different data-driven initiatives, to be able to see where we lack in some of our areas, and to be able to see how we better do this. We're one of the few counties left that haven't done it, and have looked for this, for this study, and I think this will give us a lot of good information on how we can just overall improve our services as it's connected to the juvenile detention alternative. I do have Angela here, if you, if there's some specific questions, because she is the one who is writing the grant and doing all of that, and is, she does a tremendous job as the lead coordinator for Shawnee County on this initiative.
Questions for the expert?
Absolutely.
You better have her then.
Yes, Commissioner Cook.
If you could, just maybe briefly for the commission, as well as maybe everybody else who's watching or taking notes, what are some of our juvenile initiatives that we've instituted recently? What are some of the outcomes that we've seen? How is this beneficial to the Department of Corrections? What are we, why are we doing this?
Angela McCarty, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. We've been doing the JDAI, which is the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. This is our sixth year. We've been doing this now since 2011, January. Originally, we decided to join as a site with the state because our populations in detention were so high. We're licensed for 75. We were at 80 at times. We were housing kids in the gym, so our conditions of confinement weren't necessarily where they needed to be. Since we've been doing this work with, with the state and the other five sites in Kansas, our population now today is at 27. We were, at a time, housing kids that were runaways and truant kids, and we're not housing them near as much anymore. I think we have like two in the facility today, which is tremendously better when they were making up about 40% of our population at a time. So since we've been doing this work, there's eight core strategies with JDAI, and we are meeting, we have a risk assessment at juvenile intake. That's an objective risk assessment. When before, it was very subjective, like if a kid was on probation, it didn't matter if they got picked up for disorderly, they were automatically coming to detention just because they were on probation. So those are, those kids are diverted now either to home. Ideally, if we had a continuum of alternatives to detention in this community, those kids could go to those, like if we had a shelter, or if we had a day or evening reporting center, or electronic monitoring, which is one of the pieces that Community Corrections is applying for the same grant for alternatives to detention with electronic monitoring, because we don't currently have that as an option in Shawnee County for juveniles. So that's one piece that we're meeting. The Alternatives to Detention Work Group, we still have, like I said, we are kind of lacking in that area, because with Senate Bill 367, which just passed, it has diverted funds that we used to get at the Juvenile Detention Center. Those funds are now to be placed in a community alternatives fund. That's what it's supposed to be for now, is to create these alternatives to detention. But those monies right now are being diverted into, like with Community Corrections, so they are now implementing programs, evidence-based programs that they weren't implementing before, like family functional therapy. They're trying to do a contract with the Youth Advocate Program. They're also getting ready to start doing some therapy groups called Moral Recognition Therapy. So they're, and EPICs training, they've all gone to this case management training with the state. And so they're actually changing the way they do probation. It used to just kind of be a one-size-fits-all probation. The probation orders were the same for juveniles as they were for adults. Juveniles are not the same as adults. So it's just really getting us to think differently about what we're doing and using more best practice in probation with court services and Community Corrections. So that is also diverting some kids from detention, because probation violation kids were actually are one of our highest rates of detention, and that has drastically gone down. But with Senate Bill 367, that has changed that to where they cannot, probation officers can't do arrest letters anymore like they used to do, and so they really have to think about how they're doing things differently with kids on their caseloads. Conditions of confinement is another strategy, and we did a self-assessment on that about three years ago. And then since then, we've also been accredited with American Correctional Association, and we're one of the only juvenile detention centers in the state that's accredited by ACA, so that's a pretty great accomplishment for us. We've added multiple different programming into the facilities. As you know, we've put the garden in, and we're doing those things. We're just keeping our kids more involved, so we're hoping to start seeing a reduction in our use of forces and length of isolation times, seclusion. That's a big deal now in, in our facility, that we're trying to accomplish that. But one of the other, and that will be one of the other pieces of Senate Bill 367, is now it's diverting the lower-level kids from detention. We're getting the kids that probably should be in detention, the more high-risk to public safety kids. Well, they're a lot more difficult to handle, so we're trying to balance that. But then this is the other piece of this grant. One of the strategies is disproportionate minority contact, that you're addressing that in your community, and that's why we want to apply for the grant, because to consult with this group, it's pretty expensive, and we did not budget for that originally. So we want to be able to allow Hayward Burns Institute to come in and work with our JDAI Collaborative and our J-CAB Group, and if they can work with us, then we can bring them in, and they'll do a system assessment with all of our stakeholders in our, in our agencies and in the community, and then we can start looking at where are our, where are weaknesses in dealing with minorities, and are they disproportionate in detention based off the population in your community? Are they disproportionate in out-of-home placements? Community Corrections caseloads, Court Services caseloads? And where do they fall in the actual court system and those types of things? And so we, we don't really have a way of tracking that or looking at that, and so this is really a way for us to, they'll come in and help us figure out where do we need to go, and give us some recommendations and some action steps, and so. I don't know if I answered all your questions, more than you needed.
Actually, you did. When this legislature changed our, really how we look at juvenile corrections, the Senate Bill 367 really was a very radical shift in policy change. We've seen an impact, and I know the Department of Corrections has been preparing for a change in our juvenile population, where we talked about going from 80 to less than 30.
27, yeah.
So that is a huge shift. And so the Senate Bill 367 was designed to really have more of an impact in trying to have preventative services, more therapeutic services, trying to divert people away from having juvenile offender incarceration, and really keeping the incarceration for those that have committed serious offenses.
Yes.
As we all know, the problem is if you input serious offenders with truancies, you're probably not going to be picking up good habits, you're probably going to be picking up bad habits. And so really trying to identify who we need in the corrections. And so I thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And I think that this is one step in making, identifying how we respond to Senate Bill 367.
Yes.
How do we make sure that we improve our corrections? So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would move for approval.
I'll second. Just to clarify, it is a one-year grant and no match is needed currently?
That's correct, one year. It's, goes from July 1 to June 30.
Okay.
And no match.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries 3 to 0. And thank you, Angela. Well done, well done. Next item, please.
Item B3 has been approved. B4, Consider Approval of Request to Hire and Pay a Social Worker at Higher Step Resulting in Annual Salary of $47,822.10, including benefits for the remainder of 2017.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. I think everybody here knows our long history of trying to improve our mental health services at the Department of Corrections, and we were approved earlier this year to go out for an RFP, but during that time for, to look at our mental health services, but during that time, we still have needs and services right now that we have to fulfill. And we did have a social worker who did retire, and we have been covering that right now with our current staff, but earlier, we were approved to be able to hire an additional social worker to be able to help us add services. This person that I'm asking to hire today comes with excellent credentials. This is a person here who is one that was, has been on our CIT board, somebody who was an original crisis mobile responder, somebody who is a go-getter, somebody comes in with very high levels of education requirements, someone who has also been, was instrumental in starting up our Alternative Sentencing Program at the City of Topeka. This person was, used to be a liaison for the, with Valeo and Shawnee County Jail, a person who understands our policy procedures, who's been out. This is a person here that came to us when I jumped, when this, she came here to apply. And it is higher than the starting salary, and I do, I want everybody to know that I do appreciate and recognize the work that was gone to the CBIS. But with the person who has this many years of experience that she has, the level of expertise, her knowing our system and things like that, I quickly met with Jeff regarding this, being able to do this, because this was a person that I know will get away. If we don't, we're not able to do this. So we do have the money that was in our budget to be able to do this. I want to, please let everybody understand that this is just for this year, because in 2018 is where we plan to move forward with our other systems. And this person is completely knowledgeable and receptive of that. So without any other further quest, or statements, I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Cook.
Having worked with Ms. Beatty as a crisis responder, she's very familiar with the law enforcement component.
Yes.
She's worked with Valeo, so she's very familiar with their programs. I've worked with her personally as, with the Alternative Sentencing Court, with the City of Topeka Municipal Court. It would be my pleasure and honor to move for her hiring with the Department of Corrections. I think this is a, a great addition.
Oh, yes.
And obviously, this will last until we have the RFP, but in the meantime, this is a great addition, and I look forward to having her on staff.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Carries 3 to 0. Next item, please.
Item B5, Consider Approval of Request to Advertise and Fill a Vacant Custodian Position at a Salary of $37,324.10, including benefits.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is last of Brian Cole today, I hope, that we do have, unfortunately, we did have somebody who left the Department of Corrections, and that this is a custodian position that is a much-needed and part of our team at the Department of Corrections, that there are, this is, right now, we're covering it with overtime, which I do not want to cover it with overtime, number one. Number two, that our sanitation are some of the highest standards that we have to meet when it comes to our ACA and our accreditation and OSHA. So this is a much-needed part of our team. This is not a new position. This is a position already currently budgeted. I did meet with, I called Betty quickly and let her know that this is a new position, and so I think everything's fine.
Good, I'll move to approve. Questions?
No, second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Archer, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries 3 to 0. Thank you very much, Brian. And next item.
Item C, Treasurer, Number 1. Consider Approval of Request to Award Bid and Negotiate a Three-Year Contract with Mail Services LLC for Printing and Mailing Tax Statements.
Good morning, Commissioners. Larry Maugh, Shawnee County Treasurer. As you recall, in February, you authorized us to issue an RFP for Mail Services to print and mail our first and second half statements. We completed that task. We had 13 bidders. One bidder was significantly lower than any other bid. We eliminated that bid because it had obvious errors, and we considered it non-responsive because of that. We took the next three lowest bids. There wasn't a significant spread between those bids, about $1,700 on a bid that's going to equate to about $60,000 for, for the year. Of that, of those three, we chose Mail Services. We chose Mail Services because they were only, the only one of the three that actually did work in the state of Kansas. The others, while they do tax statements for entities, cities, and counties, and states, have no business in Kansas. While Mail Services has business with three out of the top five counties, including Johnson and Sedgwick County, if you include Shawnee County, that would be four out of the top five, or roughly 50% of the tax statements to the state of Kansas will be issued by this company. So we're recommending that we use Mail Services. That is the company that we did the pilot with last year. Now, I want to also state that I would give preference to local companies, and we did have a couple of local companies that responded. In one case, the price was significantly higher. In another case, the other case, the, the price was within competitive range. However, in both cases, we would be the sole customer for printing and mailing tax statements. And this defeats one of the prime purposes that I tried to achieve with outsourcing this, and that was to not be dependent, be the only person or the only company that was, that was their customer, so that, you know, we wouldn't be prone to, if we had a failure of a key employee leaving the company, or a printer going down, we would not suffer the consequences of them not being able to respond. The company that was, a local company that was most competitive, had a lead time of three weeks. And as you know, we're getting crunched because of caps and the way we do our budgeting on when we're going to be able to print or to complete our tax information and get those statements out. So three weeks was more than I wanted to live with. That's almost a month of lead time, and we don't really have that. We usually get about two weeks of lead time, and then we try to get those statements out in, in the middle of November. This would force me into the first part of December, and that's not something I'm willing to live with, and I particularly don't want to be the sole customer for this type of service for any particular company. So I'm recommending that we use Mail Services, and I'm asking for authorization to negotiate a contract for three years of service with them.
Questions or comments for Treasurer Maugh? Yes, Commissioner Cook?
This, we did some tax printing earlier. Who did our tax printing? Was it Mail Services?
Mail Services. They've been printing tax statements for Johnson County for, oh, five, 10 years. Douglas County has been with them for at least five years. They also do Sedgwick County. So they already have the top two counties in the state as far as population is concerned. We're the third largest, and then of course Douglas County. The only county of the top five they don't have is Wyandotte County. They, they already interface with our software through Sedgwick County, CIC. They interface with our bank, which is the, the tail end of it, with UMB Bank with Johnson County. So we have the advantage that if there are some things up on the front-end side, either legislative or software, that they have an incentive to fix that, and to be very attentive, because Johnson County and Sedgwick County are in the boat with us. And then on the other end of it, which is very important, the interface with UMB Bank and our lockbox, Johnson County uses UMB Bank, so they then have an incentive to satisfy Johnson County as well as Shawnee County as far as interfacing with our bank. So it's very important, I think, and gives us considerable leverage when issues come up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would move for approval of the request to award the bid to Mail Services LLC. I would note, though, that, you know, I think that this commission should always strive to keep our tax dollars local, support local businesses as we can, but as the Treasurer outlined, the lead time of three weeks with the pressures that the legislature has placed us under, we just don't have that luxury like we may have had, and because of that three-week response time, it's reasonable for us to use somebody who's not a local business.
I agree. I'll second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm going to save a few steps and do something I would normally do administrative communications, and since we're on the mailing of tax statements, those tax statements for the second half went out on Tuesday, started to be mailed on Tuesday. The online payment system is up and running, as well as the lockbox with UMB Bank, so your second half tax statement will be due May the 10th, and the statement is in the mail to you. Thank you.
Thank you again, Larry. Next item, please.
Item D, Parks and Recreation, Number 1. Consider Authorization and Execution of Contracts, C-123-2017, renewable through 2020 with Silverback Enterprises for Management of the Topeka 10-Meir Triathlon, with the expenses offset by a $500 special event fee and minimum donation of $4,000 to the Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shawnee Osborne Parks and Recreation. If you remember, back in October, we asked the commission if we could go out and solicit letters of interest, and we had one group that came back, and that was the group that we've been dealing with for the last, I want to say maybe five, six years with this event. And they have done a wonderful job. We'd like to go ahead and, and put the contract together and have you guys guys approve it. It is renewable till 2020, but there is a clause within it if we want to back out or they want to back out. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Sean?
No, I would move for approval, but I would also note that Silverbacks is currently providing meals. And Sean, you want to hit on?
Yeah, it's two separate entities. We have another Silverback group here in Topeka, and this Silverback group partners with another group in Lawrence, and that's where they're from. And they put on triathlons throughout the Midwest. And other countries, they do it as well, too. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
That was a motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you very much, Sean. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item E, Public Works, number one, consider approval of a project budget in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars for road maintenance for the South Topeka Boulevard Cold Mill and Hot Mix Asphalt Concrete Overlay Project from Southwest 57th Street to a point north of Southwest Airport Drive with funding from the Public Works 2017 Operation Budget and the Special Highway Fund.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Blunt of Public Works in Salwaste. This is a Public Works item. And as you may recall, last year, we began work on this section of roadway, South Topeka Boulevard, as it enters into the city. And we did a mill and overlay project from the city limits, which is basically Forty-Ninth Street down to Fifty-seventh Street. We'd like to continue the improvements of that roadway as it leads into the city and do the next segment, which would be from where we left off last year near Fifty-seventh Street, and go about, about six thousand feet to the south, to essentially Southwest Airport Drive. And Southwest Airport Drive is about two thousand feet south of university, of intersection of university. We feel with South Topeka Boulevard being, you know, a pretty major gateway into the community, we want to, and with the amount of traffic it gets, and the, and the last time that major mill and overlay work has been done on that roadway, it's a pretty high priority for our department. And so, we would recommend that we get approval to proceed with this project. The funding, as mentioned, would come from a combination of our operational budget and then from special highway funds. Our intent is to do it just like we did last year. It's going to be a pretty short timeframe. What our intent here is, and to help us get the best bids, we are going to be flexible as far as our start time is concerned for the contractor. But once they start, they then will essentially have nineteen calendar days to get the road open back up for traffic, and then twenty-nine, or, excuse me, twenty-six calendar days to complete all the work. So, the way we're planning on setting it up is, the earliest start date would be Monday, June 12th. And if they were to start then, then they would have twenty-six days to complete the work. If they choose to start later, the latest start date that we would allow would be September 4th, and then they would have twenty-six days from that point to get the work done. So, by giving them flexibility, really, on a job of this length, as far as timeline, we believe it really puts us in a position of getting the best bids, because then contractors can fit that work into their schedules, and that, that oftentimes can bring pretty good prices. So, if there's any questions regarding this, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Questions for Tom?
Yes.
I may.
Is it total closure, or it, you'll still have traffic?
It was traffic.
Or is it total, you'll still have traffic?
Yes, we will be doing, because there's, there's two lanes on, on both northbound and southbound, so there will at least, there will at least be one lane as we do the work.
Yes, Commissioner Cook?
Tom, I think your plan's great. I don't have, I think this is a much-needed improvement. I mean, a road is still really in not noticeable bad shape, but this is what we don't want to have, get to, so we have this preventative maintenance. My concern is, as we look at the Heartland Park, as they gear up for their events, making sure that we don't negatively impact their business where operations work, congest traffic as people are trying to come and go from the events. And so, I don't know the Heartland Park schedule off the top of my head, but I would just ask that we kind of look at that when we're bidding it out.
And actually, we have their major races, the Summer Nationals, which is toward the end of May. And this is what we did last year. We began our project like the week after the day, and I think it was, I think it was Memorial Day weekend typically, but this is, this is how this earliest start date was set, was at least to avoid that, that major, that major event.
That's good. That, that was a concern that I had.
Excellent point. Did we have a motion yet?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Buehler, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you very much, Tom. Next item, please.
Item N, Emergency Management, number one, consider approval of request to apply for the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grants for federal fiscal year 2018, October 1, 2017 to September 30, 2018, to be used to fund training for local responders for hazardous material incidents.
Morning, Commissioners. Nelson Castile, Emergency Management. This will be a grant that runs the federal fiscal year of eighteen. There's a, this is just a request permission to put in for the grant. The Kansas Department of Emergency Management sends out solicitations and asks that those that are interested put in for it, come up with the plan and fill out the application we have. That then goes to the Commission on Emergency Preparedness. That's part of the state, a lot of the state executive that takes care of that. And by June, they normally have a decision by them. We would find out sometime in August or September whether we actually got the grant or not. It would work like the current grant that we're on with Operation Pegasus. We submit the bills, and they pay us back. It's, we always make sure not to spend more money than we know that we're going to get back. The soft match, again, would be the responders or participants or the planners' salaries that we have. And with Pegasus, we've already, with Pegasus, with the participation we've had in it so far, we've already made the soft match before we've even really spent a lot of money. So, we're looking forward to doing this next year. It's to look at the lessons learned from Pegasus and apply training to that. There'll be a tabletop exercise afterwards, and then if we need to revise our plans or revise how we do things, this is, this, this program is what we would use to do that.
Thank you. Questions for Nelson?
I have none. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Buehler, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries three to zero. Next item, please.
Item F2, consider reappointment of John Wiley to the Ambulance Advisory Board for a term expiring June 11, 2020.
John Wiley was the replacement for Nels Anderson, who was on the board, and he resigned last February. The, the resolution requires a staggering of terms, so every three years on June 11th, there's either an appointment or a reappointment that occurs. In this case, this would be for a full term for John Wiley to 2020.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Archer, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries three to zero. Next item, please.
Item F3, acknowledge your seat of the resignation of Brooks Oxendell from the Ambulance Advisory Board effective June 11, 2017.
Commissioners, the current board member of Brooke Oxendell, she was filling an unexpired term that was not reappointed back in June of fourteen, and she has decided not to serve any further on the board as a citizen rep. This comes before you, because you are the body that appoints the citizen representatives. We have a little over two months before that position. We'll be vagrant. We wanted to give you time to solicit applications or resumes that we had in the past and select somebody to sit on that board, starting on June 11th, and it would be for a full three-year term as well.
Move to accept the resignation.
I'll second. And are we going to give a period of time to then, I'll second, and I guess we could do that action first, to accept the resignation?
Yeah. Motion made to accept by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Buehler. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Motion carries three to zero. Commissioner Buehler?
And then, I just, I think normally, we've given a period of two weeks, solicited the help of media to get interested parties to submit their information to the, to the commission. Is that correct?
Yes. And we've, the copy is also attached to the packet of 2012-59, which is the resolution that determines the qualifications and the requirements. There are some specifics in there that, that due to ethical considerations that we have to take into consideration of any appointment that the, that the commission makes for a citizen at large.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing it up. And thank you, Nelson. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item F5, Administrative Communications.
Administrative Communications.
Good morning, Commissioners. Les Crooks, Kansas Expo Center. So, this weekend at the Expo Center is the final weekend of hockey for 2017, unfortunately, as our boys did not make the playoffs this year. So, we also have a barrel bash race at Domer, a high school prom, Harley rider training, and a gun show in the exhibition hall. So, those two seem to go well. That's it. Have a great weekend.
What is the barrel bash, by the way, Les, for those that aren't familiar?
Mr. Gregory.
Justin Gregory, Kansas Expo Center. Barrel Bash is a three-day barrel race. Host, it's, the owners live in Oklahoma. We actually host three of those barrel bashes in a year, but it's just a big three-day barrel race. So, there'll be approximately three hundred to three hundred and fifty, three seventy-five entrance per day. They've added a different division this year. There will be a youth class, so they can actually qualify for the youth national finals rodeo. So, we're looking forward to seeing some, some new faces and some added people at the event.
Good. That's good information.
So, three days of barrel racing.
Of barrels. Okay. Thank you. Others for Administrative Communications?
Good morning, Commissioners. John Knight, Parks and Recreation. I'm glad I had the opportunity to come up here, and I'm glad Justin pointed out what a barrel race was, because Captain Cole, or Brian Cole here, thought that you got up on the top of a hill and pushed two barrels down. So, I'm glad you learned about that. We have two, we have some big events going on this weekend that are all associated with the tulip time. We have the tulips at Twilight at Ward Mead Park that invite people to come out to. And we also have a lot of activities out at Lake Shawnee at the Betis Complex for the tulip time. So, if you're looking for something to do now that it's quit raining after two weeks, that we have some beautiful activities to be a part of. So, thank you.
Exactly. Thank you, John. Others? Commissioner Buehler?
I know Commissioner Cook mentioned Project Wellspring with Grace Med and their capital campaign for the new clinic at the old Dillons. It was a very nice event. Had a lot of good participation and hope for good things.
Commissioner Cook?
Concur completely.
Okay. Nothing about opening day?
Well, Monday, I hope that we, Commissioner Archer, if you can keep the agenda a little light, I have other engagements about an hour and ten minutes to the east as soon as we get done with this.
Well, I'm surprised you're not sporting the blue a little today.
Well, I, you know, I, the basketball game Monday, I guess the process was ugly, but the result was outstanding. It was really, really great for Roy and the Tar Heels. I was, I was excited. Also, the Masters Golf Tournament, a tradition like no other, starts today, and I want to wish Gary Woodland from KU, and a native, best wishes in the Masters. I think that'd be outstanding if, if he were to win. The other thing I wanted to mention is that next week, we will start the performance evaluation process for senior leaders, and I've been working with Jeff on the schedule and, and the documentation we're going to, we're going to use this year. And Jeff's been very helpful in that regard, and I want to thank him for that. And I'll keep the agenda as short as possible on Monday. Commissioner? Next item, please. Next item, please.
Item Six, Executive Session.
Is there a need?
Commissioners, I would like to call an executive session for a period not to exceed fifteen minutes for matters of non-elected personnel and consultation with our attorney.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Buehler to go into executive session for a period not to exceed fifteen minutes. I'll second that. Motion made, seconded, voted three to zero, and we're in executive session. We are back in session. No action required. We are officially adjourned.